If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the public comment section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Good morning. I'd like to call the February 20th meeting to order. And is Pastor Tom Porter here?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Pastor. Please come up. Give us your prayer this morning, sir.
Father God, we thank you for the privilege it is to live in Brevard County. We thank you for law and for order, and we ask for your leading in this meeting today, and may it well be productive, beneficial to the betterment of the people of Brevard County, and it's in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the December 5th meeting, please? There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Goodson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're under resolutions, awards, and presentations. This is Commissioner Pritchett, but I believe Commissioner Felton is going to be reading the resolution. Or you can...
Do we have the representatives here today for the women in construction?
Maybe they're out building something.
Maybe, can we move it maybe later to the bottom or something?
Absolutely.
So give them time to maybe be here later?
Absolutely. No problem.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're on the consent agenda. There are no cards for the consent agenda. Is there anybody from the commission that has any comments or cards they'd like to pull for the consent agenda?
There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett.
Second.
Commissioner Tobias seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, let's go to Development Environmental Service Group, Planning and Development. Who we got over there? We starting off with you, Mark?
Yes, Commissioner. Good morning. G wants a petition to vacate a public utilitiesment in Barefoot Bay, District 3, vacating part of two public utilitiesments to combine a house and garage with the breezeway. No issues.
Okay, there's no issues on that. Is there any motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Tobias moves to approve.
I'll second.
Commissioner Felton seconds. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go for it, Mark.
G2 is an ordinance amending geographic boundaries in District 1 for the Road and Bridge Municipal Service Taxing Unit. In 2007, the county entered into a stipulated settlement agreement, and on January 9th, 2024, the city of Cocoa and the county entered an ILA. This is a requirement to adopt an ordinance.
Is there any motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Goodson is...
I'll second his motion.
Okay, I'll... Sorry about that.
I will second his motion.
All right, second the motion, and we'll go into discussion with the cards. Thank you. So, motion to approve by Commissioner Goodson, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. We have Katie Delaney who would like to speak on this. And Katie, guess what?
Yes, sir.
Three minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I've learned.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. As I was looking at this, I didn't see anything about stormwater conveyance systems. And from what I understand, that is also a piece of this that we need to be funding or taxing for, I guess. As I've been talking to my neighbors in this community, they are very upset about how this is all going on, how little public knowledge is going out about this. Most people don't even know this is happening. And so, of course, I've been telling them. But we already have a major flooding issues in Cannavale Groves. And if this neighborhood goes through and connects to the county stormwater conveyance systems as it's planned right now, it's just going to up the burden of our systems as is. So I hope that you guys push for another plan for this, figure out a way to... If we can't stop this development from going in, even though this piece of land has a crazy amount of wetlands on it, I believe it's 70% is wetlands, we got to find another way to do this because it's going to flood people's properties. And I understand that, you know, this group who owns this property, they have their property rights for their property, but what about everybody around them who has their property rights? And we've been there far longer than this group has owned this property. They bought this property knowing that access was an issue. They bought this property knowing that wetlands were an issue. So at what point is it buyer's responsibility? And why do we, the people, have to pay for that? And why do our investments have to be at stake because they didn't do their due diligence? So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie. Sandra Sullivan, you have 30 seconds. I'm kidding, Sandra.
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. It's so nice to have the cameras on again. Thank you so much for that decision to fix that. First of all, I want to say that this agenda item goes back to a May 23rd, 2023 meeting with an access route to Grissom Parkway. I had spoken to Commissioner Felton on this item because I'd seen the lobbyist for Brightline, and he had told me this was about borough pits. So I felt like when we're talking about putting an egress that is going to impact and turn a rural road into a throughfare to a major road, that at least the people who live on that road should have been given, within 500 feet, should have been given notice. This feels like a lack of transparency and hiding things from the public because under the stipulated agreement that governs this, you're putting a rural road through a rural community to a large development rather than the option for the county was to put in a road down here and the... That would require eminent domain, and that was not done. You chose a cheaper route. But the problem I have is a lack of transparency for the public. Now, on the second part, the stipulated agreement includes two things. It includes MSTU for road and bridge and MSTU for stormwater. And so this was brought up when you guys approved this about the stormwater issue. I want to read from, well, that stipulated agreement was approved, what the Assistant County Manager and former Planning and Zoning Director said. He said, "This piece of property, it's recognized as being fairly wet just the way it's laid out. In your package, you can see what's the white area that is proposed for residential development. Pretty much everything that's not white is pretty much retention in open space, so they're already recognizing a fairly constrained property." He goes on to say, "Who's the developer of this property to the greatest extent possible to keep all the stormwater within the property to avoiding those two permits? If they choose, we'll be ensuring that they're not exasperating an already poor condition that exists in Cannavale Groves and certainly not creating a new one." The issue here is flooding. And when I talked to, after the last meeting, to the county attorney, he said he was going to go ahead and issue a stormwater conveyance permit for them to move forward, and I questioned and felt that this should come before the public and have the public in those areas with some transparency weigh in on this very important decision since it very likely will flood their properties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll be moving on to... Oh, we have a vote on this, do we not?
Yes.
Yes. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Yes, you do.
All right, thank you very much. I'm 75, and I'm getting a little cognitive deficient. All right, there you go. Just don't start calling me Joe Biden, okay? I'll be upset with that. All right, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, let's go to new business, and I would like to try to get a little bit of the mundane portion of the new business out of the way so we can get into a meet of some of the things that we need to discuss today. So I'm going to go to miscellaneous on new business and 1.5, resolution declaring the intent of the board to not make a finding of critical need pursuant to Section 2.9.3.1. Who would be handling that?
Mr. Chair, that's mine. Are we talking I-5, you said?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. 2008, 73% of Republicans, Democrats, and non-affiliated voters voted for a referendum putting a cap on annual increases in county and ad valorem revenue. Previously brought forward resolution seeking the board's support in intent not to bust the voter cap, approved charter cap. There's no fiscally responsible reason outside of a declared emergency why would be necessary to do so. While the charter provides, the county manager is in control of the county's budget. It's our job to give him direction. Therefore, being fiscally conservative, I ask the board's support in not busting a citizen-approved charter cap for the 2024, 2025 budget. The motion would be moved to adopt the attached resolution declaring the board's intent not to bust the charter cap. That's the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor, and I have a card on this, but let's see if we can get through a second and into discussion. Anybody who's going to second this? Commissioner Pritchett has seconded. All in favor, so, okay, one more card. Sandra Sullivan, please. You've got a card, please.
The problem I... Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. The problem I see with this is the county has been kicking the can down the road for so long. It's nice to say, "Let's not bust the cap." But the reality is we're not being very fiscally responsible and being proactive management versus reactive management. So case in point, back in 2016, there was an impact fee study done on transportation. Now, we have a budget workshop coming up. Hopefully, that doesn't get canceled like it was last year. But going to that 2016, it was recommended a 65% increase on impact fees for single-family homes to meet transportation needs. We're now at...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Well, this has to do with not lessening cap.
Hold on, please, let me hear the point of order first.
BCC 97, 3H1. Any person addressing the board on an agenda item shall limit his or her comments to the agenda item that has been specified in the card filled out by the speaker. This item is dealing with a charter cap. It has nothing to do with impact fees.
Okay, no debate, Sandra, please.
I'm more than willing to listen, but these are two totally different subjects according to BCC 97.
Well, they're related because if you're not proactive, then you have to bust the cap because you're not being fiscally responsible and create a problem.
All right, we won't get off on the side tracks today. Let's continue on with what Commissioner Tobias...
So I'm going to be refused speaking on the issue that's going to cause you to bust the cap.
Sandra, I'm not refusing you speaking. I'm going by the rules and regulations, okay?
As you... Like, whatever.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Did she have to sit down or did she get to finish her?
She doesn't have to sit down. She has to continue on with what we're talking about, which is the agenda item, without getting off subject.
Well, it's not getting off subject to say that the reason you're busting the cap and the reason you would need to bust the cap is not being proactive fiscally. For example, by not raising impact fees on the transportation. We have a $699 million deficit on capacity needs in Brevard County, according to your budget last year, which I paid over $50 for a records request on because you canceled the meeting. So unless we're not proactive, we have impact fees for transportation not increased in 23 years and for other impact fees not increased in 32 years. And we're kicking the can down, and you guys took a really sneaky vote before Christmas to do a vote...
I resent that, and you and your suggestions that we're taking sneaky votes is out of order.
Well, it's when people are involved with their holidays not paying attention to what this commission is doing.
Mr. Chair.
I'm not going to put up with this, Ms. Sullivan. Please sit down. You can laugh as much as you want, but you're not doing this in this meeting.
Mr. Tobias, sir.
Yes.
I think we need to remind the speaker to adhere to board policies in making her comments. If she cannot adhere to the board policies and continue to disrupt the meeting, I think we ask her to vacate the lectern and go from there.
Which I just did.
Okay. I just wanted to make that point of order so it's extremely clear.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We have a motion on the floor. We've had some discussion from Ms. Sullivan. Do we have any discussion from the board?
The chair.
Yes. Commissioner Goodson, thank you.
I will not be supporting this because I know the public voted for it, but at the same token, I cannot foresee the future of what you might need or what might happen that we have to do something. We're put in a position where we have to vote. So I will not be supporting this. Thank you, Chairman.
And I understand that. Thank you so much. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Is there... Commissioner Pritchett, you have a comment, please. Thank you.
Yeah, just, this is something that Commissioner Tobias has brought every year, and I have the same questions. So it's just the intent not to do it, and it's just for this budget year. And I asked the county manager, and he feels very confident that we will not be having to do anything above what we're supposed to do. So that's what made it comfortable every year for me when I do it.
Okay, thank you. County Manager, do you have any comments?
The only comment I make is that this resolution doesn't mandate this. It only expresses the board's intent, and then through the public hearing process, the board will make the final determination relative to this. So this is only expressing intent to give me guidance on how to initially develop the budget, but that's it.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. So much for the mundane conversation I thought I was going to go through. Resolution declaring the intent of the board to adopt budget that would not construct constituted tax increase, I-6, is that also yours?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
John, thank you.
As you're aware, there's obviously a difference with a tax increase and a cap increase, thus requiring two different resolutions. This resolution would provide direction to the county attorney that the board would not vote for a budget that requires a tax increase as defined under Florida statute Section 200.065. A lot of cities don't raise the millage, but taxpayers are still paying more due to an increase in values, which the legislature has gotten wise on and sponsored HB 1195. These tax increases have been advertised, and we don't want to give any more money to the Florida today. I want to thank a large part of the efforts of the county manager. It's clear that we will be able to continue to move through the budget process without raising taxes. However, I'm seeking support of the board today to commit to our fiscal conservative principles and promise not to raise taxes on the citizens of Brevard County. The motion is to adopt the attached resolution declaring the board's intent not to raise taxes this budget year.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. I'd like to get it seconded, and then I'll recognize Ms. Sullivan for her comments. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Ms. Sullivan, would you like to make your comments, please? Before you get started, I'd like to apologize for being a little angry with you, okay? I don't want these meetings to go this way. I would prefer to just try to do it a little bit nicer, and I will try to make sure that all of the rules are followed properly. So if you would go ahead with your comments, I'd appreciate it.
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. Again, you know, it's great to not have an attempt. I fully expected that we were going to have a budget increase or a tax increase last year busting the cap related to our budget. So you may, from my perspective, you got through another year without doing that, but I'm just wondering, you know, I'm waiting for that shoe to drop on this. Many counties throughout the state have done impact fees and because of growth-straining infrastructure have implemented increased impact fees, at very least CPI. Like, we charge the people CPI on sewage infrastructure and such, but there's none on the impact fees. So I just would like very simply to say, please do an impact fee study and start addressing what our costs that we're looking at and how we're going to pay to fix them because in the October 10th, when you requested to the state, you asked for a new water plant for MEMS, a new water plant cost, funding for Barefoot Bay, and $170 million for Port St. John. You know, we don't have a way to pay for those. So when we're talking about not having tax increases, we have to find a way to cover these expenses and be proactive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pritchett, do you have your light lit up there? Would you like to make comments? Any other comments by the board? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right, we'll go to I-7. Are you going to handle this, Mr. County Manager, or who would you like to have handle it?
This was a request that was made...
Would you like me to handle it?
Well, I'm happy to do it if you like.
Go ahead, no, please.
This was a request to the chair by Brightline, asking for support for the intercity rail between Orlando and Tampa. The TPO issued a similar letter to the draft that is before the board today for its consideration. If the board approves it, then the chair will sign it, and we will send it off to the governor.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to accept? Ms. Pritchett, if you'd take the floor, please.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you so much. There's a motion to accept. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion to second. Is there any discussion? I know that Chuck wants to make a comment here. Chuck, come on up, make a comment.
I was hoping this wasn't going to be the first one. I don't approve of sending the approval letter. Brightline is a private company, then they receive grants from the state. They also fund the project with PABs, Private Activity Bonds, which, private activity bonds, which are zero interest that serve the public interest and get paid back over a long period of time. They built their terminal in Miami, and the same parent company built two 38-story buildings next to it. So they're profiting from it. If you look at the train from Orlando to Cisco Park, it makes four stops at each place where there's going to be urban growth from Orlando. Brevard County has no benefit from the train at all, other than if you own a funeral home. The, you know, we've... It's just, until we see a benefit from the train, I don't see sending anything for approval. If we don't send a letter to the governor, it sends a message that we need, you know, we're not going to grow without... We're going to have urban growth spreading, sprawling west, just like they did in Miami. We've got, we're sending two rockets a day up at least once a week now, and we're going to bring in more business, more industries here, and hopefully, I'm going to help try to do that. And with that, we will probably, eventually, we will get a train stop here, but the more pressure we put on them to give us something back... I mean, we've got a Catholic church in Melbourne that's building a concrete wall to keep the students from walking out to the train tracks. And the entire path from the airport to the Indian, to the St. John's River is fenced on both sides of the track. It's not fenced in Brevard County. You know, it's, and I drive across the track a lot, and at least once a week, I'll see a part of a car sticking over the track, and that train goes pretty fast. You know, it's... But I would not send the letter. That would be my position if I were on the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Is there discussion from the commission? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to I-8, and I think Commissioner Tobias is handling this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you are aware, Val Steel, Chair Steel's brother, was a... As many of you are aware, Val Steel, Chair Steel's brother, was a county commissioner for District Three, the one I currently represent, from 1970 to 1984. He served as a town of Melbourne Beach councilperson, Melbourne Beach mayor, in the St. John's Water Management Governing Board. He was described as the Florida Today as a futurist, and his work... With his work he accomplished is still impacting the county to this day. Some of his major accomplishments include moving the main courthouse to Vieira, the building the Spessard Hall and Golf Course, the creation of the Archie Carr National Wildlife Refuge, and he was instrumental in protecting and destroying hundreds of thousands of acres of marshland. Therefore, I find it pertinent that after all his years to the service to Brevard County and the various communities, we rename Coconut Park... Coconut Point Park in Melbourne Beach to Val M. Steel Park. I'm going to turn it over to Chairman Steel here. I'm in a somewhat similar position. I too have a brother that has done absolutely wonderful things, and I certainly live in the shadow of my brother. And Jason doesn't necessarily do that, but he's following in his brother's footsteps, and that's amazing. So the funding for the signage and the plaque would be taken out of the South Brevard Special Recreation District Fund. So the motion, there will be two motions. The first motion would be to waive policy BCC 58, and the second motion would be to rename the park known as Coconut Point Park to Val M. Steel Park and give the authority to Chair Steel to use South Brevard Special Recreation District MSTU to fund, to design a memorial plaque, and the language to be put on it. So I'd like to hand it back to you, Chairman Steel, for some added color on your brother.
Well, first of all, let me see if we can get a second on the first motion. There's a second by Commissioner Felton, and it's going to be difficult for me a little bit. So all in favor of waiving the rules signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. I think...
You want to do the second motion?
Yes, I do. There's another motion to rename the park to Val M. Steel Park, and if there's a motion forward by... There already is. Is there a second for that? Thank you very much. There's a second by Commissioner Felton, once again, and Commissioner Pritchett. And before we get into a vote on that, I just would like to make just a couple of small comments. Number one, my brother Val... Probably his famous quote was... Stole it from Ronald Reagan. "There's no limit to the amount of good you can do if you don't care who gets the credit." And I can tell you, as he being my hero since 1970, when I moved here, I watched him. And so many things happened back then that that man did for this county that he didn't really care about who got the credit. He just wanted to make sure that Brevard County moved forward in an area that was going to make it the best county in the entire state of Florida. I'm not going to get into a big, long scenario today about Val Steel. Like, a lot of you people know who he was, and a lot of you people in government have figured out what he's done. But today, I just want to say that I thought long and hard before I wanted to... Before I became decided on what I was going to do with this issue myself. So I called the county attorney, and I said, "I think I need to abstain from this vote today because I don't want to see it or want it to be any kind of conflict of interest." And Morris said to me, "You cannot abstain from voting." So unfortunately, I cannot abstain from voting, and I'm certainly not going to vote against it. I loved my brother. I think there's a lot of people in this county that love my brother. And I think people that do public service for long periods of time deserve to have the recognition, specifically when they did things like move the Titusville courthouse from Titusville to right here where we sit today. Other things that he did, I'll just mention briefly, is we used to have an old drawbridge on 192 when I was a young Republican president. We used to go out there and protest. Melbourne Causeway Protest Day. And my brother intervened with the Department of Natural Resources and the governor. And finally, ultimately, we got the funding for the Melbourne Causeway, and then the O'Gallie Causeway, and then the Pinida Causeway. So I hope and pray today that the board decides to do this. If they don't, I'll obviously be a little bit upset, not from the standpoint of being upset with them, just because I think he deserves it. So with that, I have, I think... I know, I'm just getting ready to call Sandra up. Sandra?
As for the... Sandra Sullivan, as for the merit, I have no comment there. But I just find it kind of odd that, you know, Merritt Island got raked over the coals for spending money on signs, and yet this item by District Three is paying for signs and monies. And we're giving away our parks because apparently we can't afford them, so we keep giving them away to cities and getting taxed multiple times to go to them. So I just... This is a very simple comment. It's just like, why are we spending unnecessary money?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goodson?
Thank you, Chairman. This is no reflection on Val Steel or on the chairman. But what I don't understand, or I'm a little confused on, is we're naming a... Renaming a park for a gentleman that served the county very well for 12 years.
Twenty years.
But yet... I'm sorry, 20 then? Okay, 20. But yet we don't rename parks for county employees that serve agencies for 30 years. We don't rename a park for a little guy. I'm no more special than anybody else. But at the same token, I do have issues with this, but it's definitely no reflection on you, Chairman, or on Val Steel. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Just give me a minute. I'll be all right. Thank you. Just thank you. All right, let's get back in order here. We should go up to Development Environmental Services Group on new business. The adoption of the Save Our River Lagoon Protect Plan, I believe that would be Virginia. Hi, Virginia.
Good morning, commissioners. Yes, this is adoption of the 2024 update to the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan, which was unanimously recommended by the Citizen Oversight Committee. I know there are a number of committee members here in case the board has any questions. You have the standard list of requested actions associated with this plan, so we can hit the ground running and try to move those projects along as quickly as possible. This particular update adds $27.2 million for projects, nine new projects, and modification of five previously approved septic-to-sewer projects, $4.1 million to improve the cost effectiveness of those septic sewer projects. It also updates the revenue growth rates for the 10-year collections of the tax and updates the inflation applied to the construction projects funded through the plan, and it adjusts the homeowner cost share for septic-to-sewer connections where there is a pump involved. We've seen those costs go up quite a bit, so this increases that homeowner reimbursement cap from $18,000 to $24,000. And that's my summary, unless the board wants additional details.
Motion to approve?
There's a motion from Commissioner Pritchett to approve. Is there a second? I don't believe there's any other cards. How about discussion? You want to discuss... All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Oh, I didn't see a card from you, Sandra.
I don't have any other cards.
See any other cards? Come on up, Sandra. That's all right.
I do... I don't have any cards on I one.
That's fine. If you have... You can fill it out later. That's fine. Go ahead.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So the bottom line issue for the lagoon that I have a concern with this plan, and I've been coming up here since, I think, 2018 each year about the plan. So 96% of the seagrass, this was a presentation by MRC, this is a little bit outdated, 96% of the seagrass is gone. And what we see is, as of 2010, it plummeted and continued to plummet ever since. So what changed in 2010? Did the muck change? Did the septic change? Did the sewer change? No, but there was something that changed. I want to just bring up that we used to have a very wonderful MRC Lagoon Plan Report Card. This is the last one that was produced. And in the year before this was produced, the county increased their herbicide budget by two and a half times. No surprise that we degraded from an F++ to an F- while other counties improved. We're the only county that has tax, and yet we have the worst degradation. Two counties that banned their own use of herbicides, they increase. And so what we see in their monitoring is that even where water quality is above the target of the state, even when the nutrient loading is above the target, we continue to lose seagrass. And so I just want to say, you know, one of our commissioners promised to ban spraying herbicides entering the Indian River Lagoon, but this is the second year for the lagoon plan that that's not done. So I want to go back to my primary issue is we're not addressing... This is still not in the lagoon plan, even though I believe they're required to be according to the NAP CCMP. Now, what is this tax? So if we go back to December 2015, there's a Florida Today article that proposed creating a muck tax. And here's my request to the county relating to this lagoon plan, since we're spending 37... I think it's 37% now on muck dredging, is that we had a legal opinion from the AG office, especially since we're looking at renewing it, on whether it's legal to use this tax because in 2016, they tried to change the infrastructure surtax so that it would be legal to use this tax for muck, and that failed in appropriations. And that was the second time it failed. So maybe we need to get an AG opinion, especially when we're looking at renewing it. I believe from what's in the minutes that I believe... My personal opinion is this is a bait and switch. I call this the St. John's River Water Management Muck Tax, since they're responsible. So I just want to show you a picture of our spraying canals in South Patrick Shores and the resulting no seagrass corresponding to that timeframe. So in conclusion, I would just like to say, we got mocked because I believe the intent of this tax and why we ended up with 66% muck tax that got rolled back is because that's the intent of it.
All right, thank you very much. Ron Meyer, or Meyer?
Did you guys already approve this?
No, we're under discussion.
Oh, okay. I'm Ron Meyer. I would encourage the commission to vote in favor of this. I'm one of the people involved, which I would not be hooking in or even trying to hook in to the sewer since I'm 350 feet away from the pipe. But this would enable me, hopefully, to hook into the sewer from my 38-year-old septic system, so I would encourage you to vote in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Chuck, do you have comments today, too, also? Thank you.
I grew up here. Moved up here from South Florida when I was six years old, and we used to be able to go out in the Banana River and catch 200 trout in a few hours. And, you know, I had my own views on what I thought was the problem with the lagoon system. And I watched the Citizens Oversight Committee the other day, and I've sat on several committees, several boards, gone through two state senate confirmations, and I found that this committee was probably the best run I've ever seen, and looked into the science and explained it. And I would be very much in favor of it. The only other thing I would like to add is there are other options besides adding a sewer system to replace the septic tanks. There's ozone, UVC light systems that you could put in an existing sewer tank and have drinkable water come out of it. And, I mean, it's... I helped develop a hotel in Orlando, and it was going to... A two-mile run for the sewer system for a 180-room hotel, and it was cheaper for us to put our own system in with UVC light and ozone and treat the sewage. And there's small systems that are designed for septic tank replacements, and that would be a lot better than, you know, like Milford Point, running a sewer system down there for 30 houses when, you know, each of the taxpayers could put a system in themselves. But I... Again, I want to compliment the Citizens Advisory Committee. More committees like that are what we need in this county. They did an excellent job. I actually spoke to one of the lead scientists, Terry Breeden, yesterday because she had her seventh-grade yearbook at my house that I found while I was cleaning things up from... So thank you very much.
Thanks, Chuck. Any comments from the board? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right, we are now on 1.2 Public Safety Group Board Approval of the Interlocal Agreement Between the Sheriff and Brevard County Board of County Commissioners for Fire Rescue Dispatch Services and Utilization of the Combined Communication Efforts. And we have the two big dogs up here today. Matt, Pat?
Good morning, sir.
Who's going to handle this, please?
Item I two, we are seeking approval for the interlocal agreement between the sheriff and Brevard County Board of County Commissioners for Fire Rescue Dispatch Services to authorize the chairman to sign the attached Combined Communication Center in a local agreement. It has also requested the board delegate the county manager authority to approve necessary and appropriate budget change requests, addendums, agreements, transfers, or other required administrative actions during this transition period.
We have any cards on this one? No cards? This one. Michael Bramson. Hello, Michael. How are you? Haven't seen you in a while.
Yes. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board. Mike Bramson, I'm the president of the Brevard County Firefighters Union. I'm addressing the Brevard County as a whole to thank our dispatchers that are currently working as we speak for the service they provide Brevard County Fire Rescue. We like to thank you and thank them for their actions, their call to actions, their dedication to provide the essential service as the true first responders to Brevard County. I read the interlocal agreement, and it is absolutely obvious that the culture of Brevard County Fire Rescue will be forever changed. It should be noted that we not only recognize the need for help in public safety in Brevard County, and that we can understand that the progress that we are working towards in said agreement will better the workspace of the dispatchers, will create a more comfortable work-life balance, and in hope reduce mandatory overtime for the dispatchers. We also understand and have read the state's outline, the state of Florida's outline, in the Florida Emergency Communications Number 911 State Plan. For the sake of the emergency response services of Brevard County, we are very anxious for our brothers and sisters during this imposition and remain supportive of our dispatchers as the services they provide are essential. We'd like to once again thank those dispatchers for their service and their call to action in Brevard County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Michael. Commissioner Tobia, do you have your light on?
No.
Okay, that's from an old one. Any more discussion from the board? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, guys. All right, we are now going on to I three, Approval of BCC 62 Restaurants and Changing Facilities and County Buildings. I believe Commissioner Tobia is going to ask Mr. Tredis to come up. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. The policy is a change to BCC 62, is to effectuate House Bill 1521 passed by the legislature in 2023. And I want to thank our public defender, Blaze Tredis, for his hard work on this. He had quite a bit of opinion and time that went into this. I think we all have a copy of that. Since he's much more familiar with state statute and clearly has dedicated quite a bit of time, I certainly would like to have him come up there, as you mentioned, and speak to this more eloquently than what I could. To be clear, there are two versions of this, one from staff and one that came out of District Three. So with your...
Sure, absolutely. Blaze, come on up, please.
Good morning, Chairman Steele and Board of County Commissioners. I'm Blaze Tredus, elected public defender from Brevard and Seminole Counties. This is, the issue is the policies, implementation of policy for the Safety in Private Spaces Act, which was passed by the legislature in 2023, effective July 1, 2023. This act makes it a first-degree misdemeanor crime for a person to use the restroom or changing facility of the opposite sex. That's the first thing it does. However, it excludes county, city, and state employees from that criminal conduct. In other words, it would not be a crime for a county employee to use a restroom or changing facility of the opposite sex. The act goes on to say, however, that the city, county, state government shall enact policy of discipline for county, state, city employees who, in fact, use the restroom or changing facility of the opposite sex. So Human Resources Department of Brevard County has written policy to implement the Safety in Private Spaces Act. I looked at that and disagreed with the HR policy in two important respects. The first respect is that the HR policy says that when a county employee sees a person using the restroom or changing facility of the opposite sex, they shall notify the department director, their department director. The department director, they may look at this and may call law enforcement if appropriate. I would argue that is terrible policy. It's terrible instruction for the warrantless arrest to be made for this crime. Law enforcement has to witness it in person. What the HR policy says is to go away, not call the police, not call the sheriff, but inform your department director. By then, the person is long gone. There will never be any apprehension or prosecution if that policy were enacted. The Commissioner Tobias policy eliminates that instruction. With its elimination, it's simply left that law enforcement is to investigate it. The employee will know that they should call law enforcement, and on-scene arrests can be made as a result. The second area in which I disagree with the HR policy is that the HR policy says for a county employee who sees another county employee use a restroom or changing facility of opposite sex, they shall be subject to the Merit Systems Policies of Brevard County, which is a progressive disciplinary policy, which can lead up to five violations before someone is fired. So I submit that is totally wrong as well. A county employee who is using the restroom or changing facility of opposite sex has a serious problem, a, I would say, a serious mental problem. There should be no second, third, fourth, or fifth chances. That employee should be fired, and that's what Commissioner Tobias' policy says, terminated from county employment. Those are my recommended changes. I hope you vote for John Tobias' policy changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Blaze. Appreciate it. Morris, did you have comments that you'd like to make on this, or how would you like to proceed here?
I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. I think the policy that the staff has proposed, that I reviewed, is in keeping with the statute, and there are certainly reasons why we adopted the policies we did as far as personnel to make it consistent with our personnel policies and our collective bargaining agreements. Also, it should be noted that the personnel side of this applies only to Brevard County government employees, so the public defender will still be able to supervise and instruct his employees regarding this issue and the way he feels appropriate.
Okay, so just from my understanding, did we merge both of these proposals at this point in time? Is that what we done?
There are competing proposals. There is the one that's advanced by staff and by HR and the county attorney's office, and then there is the revision as proposed by the public defender and forwarded by Commissioner Tobias.
I'm not seeing that on the agenda. I'm only seeing John's on the agenda.
No, it's an attachment.
So it's under the same item. The initial attachment, which is at pages on your agenda, numbered pages...
I got it, all right. Thank you so much. All right, so discussion with Commissioner Goodson, yes?
Question mark. Then would we, would Morris explain his version of what he wish, or what staff wishes?
Well, that's what I was hoping was going to happen.
Yeah, would you?
Mr. Chair, can we ask the county attorney to explain the difference between the two to bring to light what?
Yeah.
Because there are some substantial differences with the initial proposal as well as...
Does Melissa have something too? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. John, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, please, Morris. This is something that I think is very important that we need to get straight.
Yes, sir. So I think most critically, the version of this forwarded by staff is consistent with our existing personnel policies. It provides that an employee who violates the policy may be subject to discipline up to and including termination. As with all of our policies, there are the chance for, you know, mitigating circumstances. There's due process and hearing rights involved. So we would treat this as any other offense under our personnel policies, and obviously a serious offense could be subject to termination on the first time, but that may not be appropriate in every imaginable instance of a policy violation. For example, the policy also governs things such as designation of restrooms. So if the version forwarded by the public defender was implemented, if something, maybe signage isn't apparent theoretically, that could be a termination offense. So we think it should just be in line with our other personnel policies and our collective bargaining agreement. As far as the reporting of the criminal aspect of it, it's important to note that the first thing a governmental entity employs required to do when someone's in the restroom who shouldn't be a member of the public in the wrong restroom, they're supposed to ask them to leave. Only if they do not leave then does it become a violation. So the whole idea is that they are supposed to leave. The idea that we're somehow going to detain them until law enforcement arrives is beyond what any of our employees should be doing. We don't want employees attempting to detain someone in a restroom until law enforcement arrives. We have other ways to address people who have committed a violation like that and have left. Also, because there are a number of exceptions under the statute, and when you read the statute, some of them are quite complex, we wanted to delegate to someone with some supervisory responsibility the decision to make that call when it's an area where mistakes could be made. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Frank?
Let me add one more point. Consistent with our merit system policies, which you know I've been over for 34 years now, the progressive discipline that was discussed, it's different than what you heard. This does not mean that someone will get a slap on the wrist, oral reprimand, written reprimand, et cetera. If it's a violation of a existing policy, which this would be, an employee would be subject to insubordination. That could be a dismissal offense, that first offense, dependent upon the circumstances that are involved. So I think it's important that we stay this way with the policy, the way it's written, because it is consistent with the board's policy, and it only applies to board employees.
Okay, I have a question for Melissa. Melissa, how are we going to, once we pass one of these, get this information out to our staff and our people that are in the field? Do you have any idea?
Once the policy is adopted by the board, that would be communicated first at the director's level, and then subsequently, we can provide whatever communication and training is necessary to make sure everyone is understanding what their roles and responsibilities are.
Commissioner Tobias, do you have any other comments, sir?
No, I think Morris is, and Frank has done, have done a very good job explaining the difference between the two policies. I think both of them meet the statutory guidelines. It's just a decision that the board wants to go in.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. Commissioner Felner?
Commissioner Tobias, are you aware of any other municipal county constitutional office or any other governmental offices in the county who have taken up the alternative version as their policy and put in their employee handbook today?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I have spoke quite extensively with the public defender on this one. I have spoken, I have not spoken with any of the other constitutional officers on that, but should it go in a different direction, I may have an amendment that may give them the opportunity explicitly to go in a different direction.
Okay.
But just to clarify, nothing we do here today imposes anything on the constitutional officers and how they run their offices. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Go ahead.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, then, let's go with Commissioner Tobias' proposal first and Blaze Tredus' proposal first. Is there a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the attached District 3 language option for the new Brevard County policy, BCC 62 Restrooms and Changing Facilities in County Buildings.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, the proposal fails. Is there a motion to approve staff's proposal?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Commissioner Goodson moves to move staff's proposal. We'll get to you.
It's an amendment.
You want to do an amendment before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I believe this would be a friendly amendment. I spoke with this in an unforeseen instance of not getting it, and it was speaking to what Commissioner Felton was dealing with. So the amendment, I think, would be friendly. The motion would include authorization, but not a requirement, for elected county officers, clerk of the court, property appraiser, sheriff, supervisor of elections, and tax collector, and any other government agencies occupying or co-locating in a county building to install signage on or near the doors of restrooms under their control, indicating that such restrooms have been designated exclusively used by males or females. I want to thank the county attorney for helping with the language on that, but this, my understanding is this would give the constitutional officers the ability to go in a different direction if they were, if they were so inclined.
Okay, let's go with the amendment first. Is there a motion to accept the amendment?
Question on the amendment.
Commissioner Goodson.
Does the county attorney agree with the motion? And Frank, do you agree with it?
Let's go with the county attorney first, Morris.
It would only affect those restrooms under the control of those officers, so it seems reasonable that that's under their discretion.
Okay.
Frank?
Yeah, there's no issue from a staff perspective. We're happy to follow whatever that board direction is given.
Discussion from Commissioner Goodson?
That being said, I'll second the amendment.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Goodson on the amendment. You want to read back the amendment, please, John?
Sure. Motion includes authorization but not requirement...
...for the elected county officers, again clerk of the court, property appraiser, sheriff, supervisor of elections, tax collector, and any other government agency occupying or co-located in a county building to install signage on or near the doors of restrooms under their control, indicating that such restrooms have been designated for exclusive use by males or females. That's the motion. Or that's the amendment.
Okay, great. All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The amendment carries. Now let's go back to proposal number one of District 3's amend, no?
That one failed.
That died.
Okay, cool.
So we're on staff.
We're on the staff's approval as amended. Is there any more discussion? All in favor of the staff's approval as amended? You have a... I think we, I think we need to approve it. Let's do it just to be safe. All in favor to...
No, we need a motion.
Okay, we need a motion. It's a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there a second?
I'll second it, sir.
Commissioner Goodson seconds. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. I don't know where I'm going to go. Change my clothes after the meeting, but that's all right. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I, can I please go back to I2? I think I...
Did we do something incorrect?
I think we probably missed a motion there, so I, with your approval, I'd like to go back and make a motion for board approval of the interlocal agreement between the sheriff and Brevard County Board of County Commissioners for Fire Rescue Dispatch Service and the utilization of a combined communication center. That's the motion. It's the one we discussed previously. There's no changes.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor on changes of I2, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, we're all cleaned up on I2 now. Commissioner Tobias?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. All right, so we are now on county attorney proposed amendment to the Brevard County Home Rule Charter, adding term limits to the officers of sheriff, property appraiser, tax collector, clerk of the circuit court, and supervisor of elections.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was a request by the District 1 Commissioner for board discussion and direction regarding a proposed amendment to the Brevard County Home Rule Charter that would add term limits to those constitutional elected county offices of sheriff, property appraiser, tax collector, clerk of the circuit court, and supervisor of elections. As proposed, the term limits would be three consecutive full terms or four-year terms. No terms commencing prior to the November 5, 2024 election would be considered for purposes of calculating the term limit. And the request today is to approve legislative intent. It's not to adopt this resolution itself, to put the item on the ballot, which will ultimately require four members voting in favor to do that. Today is just to approve the legislative intent to move forward with the resolution, give any direction regarding that resolution, and then authorize staff to submit the proposed amendment in ballot language to the three attorney panel required by the charter, which reviews proposed amendments for compliance with the Florida Constitution, Florida law, and the Brevard County Charter.
Okay, I think I'm going to go to the cards on new business first.
Can I make discussions first?
You want, you want to talk first? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, obviously, this is yours, so I apologize.
No worries. Last year, I had mentioned I was going to bring this forward sometime this year. When we did the discussion with change in the charter, there was a lot of information that came in about people wanting term limits. I'm a proponent of three-term limits, but I think what's been discussed is two-term limits many times. So when I brought this forward, my thought was not to affect anybody that's currently in office, it's no reflection in them, but after this, maybe correcting something that could potentially be a problem down the road. Once you get somebody in an office as an incumbent, it's really hard to beat them. So I thought this would help that situation, and there's such a strong support of community nationwide of wanting term limits on elected officials. So again, we're not voting to put term limits on them. This was just to perhaps put it on the ballot and let the people decide what they would like to do.
Do you want to make a motion and then see if we get it seconded and then go to discussion, or would you rather go to the cards? Okay, Chuck, you're up.
Living in Beaufort County my whole life, when I got my general contractor's license in 1978, I used to have to go to the county commissioner's office and get my culvert pipes. And, you know, he'd been there for years and years and years. If we'd have had changes in term limits, you know, that's not one of these offices, but the property appraisers stayed there for years and sheriff as well. But if we'd had changes then, we may have had better drainage systems. You know, if you're an elected official, you're doing, you're a public servant, you're there to serve the public, it's not a career choice. It's, you know, it's to serve the community. And once you've served a couple terms, new people bring new ideas and new thoughts, and, you know, it shouldn't be a career choice. And, you know, an incumbent is hard to beat. And, and some people get into it to be, have a career choice, you know? So that's my view on it. I would be very much in favor of term limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Eileen Sep?
Good morning.
Good morning. Eileen Sep from Palm Bay, Florida. I've lived here for 33 years, and I'm here in opposition to this, and not that I'm opposed to term limits, but I think term limits apply when you're talking about policymaking positions. The administrative positions that they're proposing, I think, would be a great disservice to this county. We have outstanding people in these positions who've been there. They've worked their way from the bottom up in many cases. And I'm seeing that right now, we have a highest, the highest level of integrity among that administrative staff than I've seen in all the years I've been here. And I, like I said, I do believe in term limits, but policy is different. When someone comes into a position making promises to make the changes that we need, that's one thing. But in an administrative position, and I've been in those positions, I've been in C-suite positions, when you take somebody out who's really effective, there's no replacing them, and there's a significant drop in productivity as a result of that. We need people with experience in these administrative... We need people with experience in these administrative positions. They're not making decisions. They're following the guidance that's given to them by this commission and by the laws of the state. So I would prefer not to see this on a ballot, mostly because sometimes people don't really read between the lines and they don't really know the people who have earned those positions. They should be able to stay there as long as they're able to do their job. We do elect them every four years, and I think that's sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Katie Delaney.
I am against this, to have gone to every single one of those meetings three years ago. And the only time that term limits were brought up was when your appointee, Robin Fisher, tried to extend the term limits from eight years to 12 years for county commissioners in Brevard County. The people were adamant against that, but none of that had to do with constitutional officers. It had to do with, like the last speaker spoke about, policymakers. So I'm very against this. Our constitutional officers, most of the time, run unopposed because they're doing a great job. And so this is just very disheartening to see this. And I want to say that I appreciate Mr. Tobias for putting in his Form 8B because of his conflict of interest with running for that office. I would appreciate Ms. Pritchett doing the same thing, since you're now running for one of those offices. This needs a four-person vote. We don't have that. This is a moot point. So in my opinion, this should just be a dead proposal. Thank you.
Okay, then. Wait a second, we've got Richard coming up. Did you fell out of court, Sandra? Okay, great. Richard, come on up. You've been so quiet today. I've missed you.
That's over now.
All right, meeting's adjourned.
Rick Heffelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, Cocoa, Florida, beautiful District One. I guess, are we asking for three terms on this? And if three terms, why not two terms? I guess my question is, conflict of interest was interesting. I had not even thought about that. But I guess if this would go on the ballot on November and if it was approved, we don't boot anybody out that's currently in the office, right? Was that... Okay. So you're not booting anybody out. But is it three terms or two? Eight years or...
Twelve.
Twelve. I don't know why it would be any different for... I don't know why it would be eight. Twelve's an awfully long time. Could do a lot of damage in 12. You can do a lot of good in 12, too, but I just, I don't know why it's not consistent with the county commission. So, yeah, that conflict of interest is interesting, isn't it? I don't think you can get a vote, right? That's all I had. Thank you.
Wow, Richard, you have two minutes left, too. This is like a first. All right, well, oh, no. All right, let's go on. Thank you, Richard, for your comments. Kristin Lorti, where are you? Okay, so you're not going to yell at me today. You got your three minutes, and the newspapers are back, the television's back on, and we're friends again, right?
Chairman Steele, thank you.
You're welcome.
We are friends again.
Good.
Kristin Lorti, Cocoa resident, and the founder of Brevard Cares Citizens Coalition on Facebook, where we are commenting about this. We're having some rigorous debate on this current proposal. I stand against it. I'm opposed to it. I want to agree with the two female commenters who articulately spoke on why the constitutional officers are so much different than the commission officers, because I'm wholly supportive of the commissioner officer term limits, but the public is not always aware of this. I became aware through the Citizens Academy last year when I heard two excellent presentations from our current tax collector, who is now challenged by Commissioner Pritchett, and I heard an excellent presentation from our current chief clerk of courts, who took the time to give us a tour of the whole county courthouse and give us a presentation to citizens who are interested enough to find out more. So I am passionate about some of these positions, and I am in total disagreement that these chairs need to be upset every 12 years for every reason. Case in point, if we went forward 12 years to where we're sitting here 12 years from now, then what would happen is, is all the commissioners would have an easy chance to get into these chairs, as Ms. Pritchett just said, Commissioner Pritchett said, makes it really hard to beat them. And we would be literally dumping people out of their seats who might be doing a fantastic job, as has already been ascribed. I also appreciate the comment that in the Charter Review Commission, the individual who actually went to all the meetings and who it was reported on social media, never saw Commissioner Pritchett there. But she pointed out that at those meetings, there was no contest about the charter positions. But Ms. Pritchett in the paper said, "We got information during those meetings that the voters wanted this. There was an overwhelming consensus from all the voters that they want term limits on all the elected officials, and I just believe there's a conflation happening here between the two types of positions. You all are making policy. These folks are implementing policy. I sleep better at night having good people in these seats. I will be now petitioning for at least two of these candidates because I know they're doing a rock-solid job." And I can attest that the rest of them may be as well. And even my comment to you, because I've already written to all of you saying, with some questions about the sheriff's position, I've thought through that further and realized that I don't even support term limits for that. That will not solve our problem. So I'm opposed to this in both the premise that Commissioner Pritchett stated for this and the content, and I appreciate that the conflict of interest was called out by Commissioner Tobias. Commissioner Pritchett should not even be voting on this matter. So I attended this meeting. It inspired me to come to this meeting. It inspired me to found a Facebook group in order to be able to talk about these prior to our elections, and I will have a strong opinion come election, come the referendum and the tax collector election. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Nathan Slusher, where are you? Good morning, Nathan.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Nathan Slusher, up in Allendale Street in Titusville. I found it wise to come and speak today on this topic. It's a topic that I've pushed on for years. I am a huge proponent of term limits for every elected politician in the United States of America, from president to Congress to State House to county to city-wide elections. I don't believe there should be a single politician that does not have term limits, none of them. So I want to come and share my support today, but I don't want to do it on a basis of not knowing what the public wants. So on Sunday afternoon, I released a poll to the people in North Brevard, just to kind of get a quick idea of whether or not they support it. Two polls on two different platforms. One of them received 58 votes with a 95% approval rating. I did verify, three of those voters are not Brevard County residents, so out of those 58 votes, I'll take three away, and it's still pretty high. The other one was 100% Brevard County voters, and they had a 94% voting rate. The citizens want term limits, but the citizens can't put term limits on ballot, but you can. You have the option to give them a voice. No one up here is deciding to put limits on the people that are in office. Do I agree that the people in office are doing a great job? Yes, some of them are. However, should they do a job for 12, 16, 20 years? No, I don't think so. That creates a lot of problems. None of these positions have a requirement for any knowledge or a resume. They can be won by anybody in the field. There is a reason that we hire experts to help in these departments. I fully support this motion, and I hope... However, I would ask for an amendment to it, if somebody would please make it eight years instead of 12. 12 is too long. I would fully support an amendment to make this eight years. Please and thank you. I know the time's not going, so I lost track.
That's okay. Thank you so very much.
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. You know, first of all, I just find the coincidence of announcing you're running for the tax collector at the same time you put out this item as just being like a great way to get publicity, which is probably what the result is.
Sandra, please, please don't get into that.
While I am a proponent of term limits, I am not for the constitutional offices. And I'll say, I was at most of the Charter Review meetings and the discussion about term limits, and those term limits were about constitution, about, not about the constitution officers, they were about the commissioners. And they were prompted by District One's appointee twice, one at the beginning of Charter and one at the end, proposing extending term limits, which would benefit District Three and District One potentially. And so I just think the timing of this is off. This should have come forward and have a discussion, the way the Charter Review works, at the time of the Charter Review. And I do agree that it is for the voters to decide, but the time to have done this would have been during the Charter Review. I think the timing is off and is just very political.
Thank you. All right. I got it. I was just... We got Rachel, too. So you want to come up? Lisa, come on up, and then we'll have Rachel.
I don't want to, but in front of me.
You all right? All right. Come on up, Lisa, and you go ahead to the podium, if you would.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Chair Steele.
You're welcome.
Congratulations on the part, by the way.
Thank you very much.
What a beautiful...
Very meaningful.
What a beautiful way to memorialize your brother's hard work in this county. I'm here to advocate for the Charter Review process, which I do think is very effective. I would urge each of you to allow this to go through Charter Review, where the citizens have multiple chances to come speak on the subject. I've been through several of those Charter Review Commissions, and I believe the public does get engaged. We live in a wonderful county where Brevard County citizens, they get it. Those primary voters, a lot of them do their homework. I think you can look at your officers that serve this county and see that. So my ask of you today is to let the Charter Review Commission handle this, and if it goes through that, then let's let the public vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. All right, Rachel, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm goody-goody-two-shoes. Sometimes.
Man, I gotta take my glasses off to read my phone, because I've gotten to that age.
I get it.
So I apologize. Maybe I can do it. First, I want to thank everyone for allowing me and the others to have a few minutes to discuss our feelings on this topic. I try to be accessible to the citizens of Brevard County at all times. This did not start when I became the clerk of court. This started when I took the oath to be a deputy clerk in 1997. As I've moved throughout my career in different positions, and then today as you're elected a clerk and comptroller, I have learned a lot and continue to learn. It is a career I've dedicated myself to, just like everyone in this room. Everybody that stands here as a county and state employee have dedicated their years of service, and we did not expect a date to tell us when to leave. So those of us that stepped as the leaders did so to do the right thing by this county. I can tell you that many leaders of this county would be discouraged to run for office with term limits for an office that is not a policymaking office, but a management office. We would see a decline in the services. We would see a decline in the forward-thinking of these offices. I am not trying to dispute some of the ideas that you have about this, and I am not trying to discourage this to not be brought to others to discuss, but I ask you kindly not to vote on this for today. I did not have any idea what the tax collector was going to say, but I echo what she said about bringing it back to Charter Review. That was a good point that I had not thought of. So I leave you today just asking for you to consider not doing this, and I 100% respect however you vote today. That is it. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. You do an excellent job.
Thank you.
All right. We have anybody else here? Well, we have our property appraiser. Good morning, Dana. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Commissioner Goodson. Dana Blickley, 3425 Heron Lane, Titusville, Florida, 32780. I have to disagree that you cannot take out constitutional officers doing a bad job. I did a pretty good job of that. But I'm coming with a different spirit, not just necessarily the institutional knowledge to do the constitutional duties that we're prescribed to do, but once in a while, it's having enough institutional knowledge, skill set to be able to read the law, wherewithal to know that you have to follow the legislative process when they're making changes that affect what you do or maybe what you guys do, and to be able to catch those mistakes so our property owners and our constituents don't pay a price for that. That's the spirit of cooperation that I think Commissioner Pritchett was hoping that we would continue after the budget series last year, and one that I know Frank and Morris depend on. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much, Dana. All right, Commissioner Pritchett, do you have anything else? Commissioner Goodson, you want...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it my understanding today she would need, Commissioner Pritchett, three votes for this to move on, not four? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Three votes today. Now, Commissioner Pritchett, why do you think Tobias, Commissioner Tobias doesn't want to vote, but you want to vote? What is... Is there anything, any reasoning there?
I think Commissioner Tobias' reasoning is because he felt it was conflict of interest with him. I talked to the county attorney a little bit, and I have no plans on being in office more than two times if this opportunity did happen. But the real thing with this, and again, I thought this was worthy of a conversation, and I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea for the Charter Review either, but I had mentioned we were going to bring this up, and there is a strong consensus with people nationwide wanting term limits. So I just thought we'd just put it before the voters and see what they'd want to do. Again, I made it so that it was exempt for the people that were in office currently on this round, so I can't imagine the sheriff wanting to be sheriff into his 80s. So they're kind of almost exempt with this. But again, and I loved what Ms. Blickley said, and she is a great property appraiser. She had to unseat someone who had been doing the job for 20, 24 years, which wasn't a great property appraiser. So it was a tough battle. So I think this might help with opportunities for somebody who's not doing a good job in an administrative position, because nobody can really do anything with it. The employees can't do anything with it. You can't come against your boss, you lose your jobs. And it's just nothing on the ones that are already in position, but I think it's something I agree with Mr. Slusher. I think every elected official should have limits on their terms.
Yes, Commissioner Goodson.
I find it a little bit, not knowing the questions the gentleman asks people in North Brevard, but if you think about it, we hear about term limits all the time. Term limits are bad, term limits are bad. Now, if you know anything about Tallahassee, what that has done is you've started electing 20-year-olds to make decisions for you, that haven't had a family, haven't lost a job, doesn't have a mortgage, but they just left moms and now they're a state rep. Now then, if you want to talk term limits, what amazes me, would this be term limits? I think he's represented now. Altman, House, Senate, House, Senate, House, Senate. I mean, is that term limits? I guess it is, because he's been doing it for 20-something years. Okay? Now, the other issue I find funny about term limits on these people would be that if you want to run for an office and you pick those, then be prepared, if they're of a quality that we have, be prepared for a fight, because they're good. They've done a wonderful job. And I'm all for term limits. I bitch about them all the time. But, you know, it seems to be, America wants term limits in Washington. That ain't going to happen, because they're a member of the best country club in the world. So why would you want to give up that? Now, if we want term limits, there's where we need term limits. And I'm happy with eight. I'm only going to serve four. I'll give you another example of term limits. Representative Posey said, "I'm going to do this one time." He's been there 18 years. So Commissioner Pritchett, I want that signed in blood, okay? That you're only going to do it for two terms. That's all.
You have that, you have that, sir. But thank you for your comments, and I absolutely respect what you're saying.
Well, you know, I'm a little different than everybody else.
I know, I know.
Thank you.
But again, we're not voting today to put term limits on them. We're just voting to put on the ballot for them to choose. But again, it's a good discussion, so we have to see where you guys want to go with it and how we're moving forward.
I have a legal question for Morris. Morris, with the tentacles of this thing going to potentially a referendum, how many votes are we going to need today to pass this?
So ultimately, you'll need four to put it on the ballot, but today to move it forward to direct staff to draft final language or accept the language proposed and move it to the three attorney panel, you could give that direction with three, and then we could bring it back to you with the decision from the panel, and you can decide at that point whether or not to adopt the resolution and place it on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you so much. Anybody else have any questions or any comments? Motion on the floor. It's been seconded. No more discussion.
We don't have a second yet.
We don't have a second yet. Motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, let's go, if we could please, to, I think we got most of that stuff done.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before we do that, we skip the resolution for the women in construction.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. Are they here yet?
Yeah, no, I got a text. They're not coming, but they asked that we go ahead and read it.
Okay.
And go ahead and make an approval on it.
Okay.
So we're back to resolution number one. Thank you so much. Commissioner Felton, are you going to read it for Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir. Resolution for women in construction. Whereas the Space Coast Chapter has distinguished itself for over 26 years as the voice of women in construction in Brevard County, and whereas the work done by the Space Coast Chapter has benefited Brevard County through community development, scholarships, and educational programs, and whereas the Space Coast Chapter has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, and whereas the construction community represented by Space Coast, by Space Coast Chapter has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trades, careers, and positive vision of the future, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize the Space Coast Chapter and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf and support of women in construction and proudly proclaims the week of March 3rd through the 9th, 2024 as Women in Construction Week, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 20th day of February, 2024.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Felton for the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We're good.
I'd like to make Commissioner Felton the commission reader moving forward.
Ah-ha.
Yeah, they have, they have term for that in Tallahassee.
Term, we're going to term.
You do such a good job. Give them a one-year term.
In Tallahassee, they call that Mary, the auto-reader, don't they?
All right. Exactly.
There you go.
All right. So let's go to board reports, I believe. County manager, do you have a board report?
Yes, I do. We only have two items that are scheduled for the upcoming March 7th zoning meeting. These items were advertised before the staff discovered that there were deficiencies that are going to prevent the board from hearing them at that time. Since the board can't hear those items, would the board want to consider canceling the March 7th zoning meeting and direct staff to re-advertise the public hearing for a future date once those have been addressed?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Commissioner Felton has made a motion to cancel that meeting and re-advertise, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Mr. County Attorney, how are you?
I'm well, thanks, sir, and I have no report for you.
Commissioner Pritchett, do you have any reports?
Just real quick. County manager, when's our budget meeting? Is it this month?
It's the 29th.
Wonderful. Looking forward to that and looking forward to seeing you guys up there too, and it's, I think it's going to be a great meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Goodson, you have any reports?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Felton, do you have any reports?
I have an item. So inspired by renaming Coconut Point Park today after Commissioner Steele, I was thinking about another commissioner, a park it's named after, and his name is Joe Wickham. And so I have a letter here that I propose that we give direction to the chair to sign to send to City of Melbourne, and I'd like to read it real quick and then ask that we approve it.
Go ahead, sir.
The Brevard County Board of County Commissioners is writing to express Brevard County's commitment to maintaining Wickham Park as an integral part of the county's parks and recreation system. As we recognize the 60th anniversary of Wickham Park's dedication, the park stands as a testament to providing exceptional recreational opportunities and community spaces for our residents. Wickham Park has long been established as the regional urban park in our county. Its importance as a countywide destination cannot be overstated. As evidenced by the myriad of uses and facilities available to our residents, the park's diverse offerings, including trails, multi-use fields, pavilions, an amphitheater, a dog park, senior center, community center, camping grounds, disc golf courses, archery ranges, and horse riding areas ensure that there is something for everyone to enjoy. Furthermore, Brevard County remains committed to investing in the future of Wickham Park to ensure its continued relevance and accessibility to residents. Projects such as the construction of the new disabilities program building and the importance of continuing to maintain and upgrade park infrastructure, such as the replacement of bathroom and shower facilities, as well as park road improvements are essential for ensuring the safety, comfort, and enjoyment of all parkgoers. Wickham Park, our county's central park, holds a special place in the hearts of our community members, and we are committed to preserving its status as a Brevard County park for generations to come. We will continue to work to ensure that Wickham Park remains a vibrant hub of recreation, relaxation, and community engagement. That is my letter. Mr. Chairman, and I would appreciate, I would like to make a motion that we give direction to the chair to sign this today to send to the City of Melbourne.
There's a motion on the floor to direct a letter to the City of Melbourne to Mayor Alfry in regards to Wickham Park. It's been seconded by Commissioner Goodson. And before we move on, Commissioner Tobias, you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And this question would be for Commissioner Goodson on this one. Commissioner Goodson, in the past, you've mentioned you have been in favor of county parks that were in the jurisdiction of cities about the transfer of that property. Is there something unique about Wickham Park, or has your opinion changed? And the only reason I'm asking is we go fur, as we go further on this one, I'm just trying not to waste other people's time.
I understand. You're referring to the city parks in Cocoa, which, yes, well, okay, I'm telling you.
I'm referring to everything.
I'm telling you. We pay about $1.3 million a year to maintain them. They only kick in $400,000. I just want them to sign their agreement to us, which said they would pay 50%. That's the only issue I have with parks. I don't think our park at Wickham does that. We fund it, we pay for Wickham's maintenance, and it's a county park. We're talking about maintaining city parks. They even charge us for the water up there, Commissioner, for their own park. We have to pay a water bill. They charge us for TV, for internet. They don't pay half the cost to rebuild the buildings, which they should by the intermodal agreement that we had, but they haven't signed it in seven years. That's my bitch with parks up there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for making that extremely clear. I just, as we move forward, I was just trying to get the lay of the land.
But I'm always with you, Commissioner. I always protect your back.
No, I appreciate it. I hope, I hope we can stick there when we deal with lifeguards here coming up and paying for half. So just, just throw that out there. Thank you for making that clear as we, as we move forward. And Commissioner Felton, I appreciate this. If the board votes, as I suspect they will, four, four to one on this one, I think that sends a pretty clear message to Melbourne and saves my staff from moving forward on this. So I do, well, I can't support.
It could be five-one, or five-zero. It could be five-zero.
I will be, I will be going the other way on this one.
All right. Fair enough.
Oh, boy. All right. There's a motion on the floor to send a letter to the City of Melbourne to Mayor Alfry on Wickham Park. It's been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. All right. I have no report, and I think we can go to your vice vice chairman, unless I've missed something.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a board.
Oh, we got public comment.
Oh, sorry.
You want to do that first?
Oh, we do that afterward.
We normally do that afterwards. That's correct. Go ahead with your vice.
I do have a real board report, and I think, I think Commissioner Pritchett started this before we wrangled the county attorney's office with some work. I wanted to see where the board was on this. Currently, Brevard County Code Section 74-102B, Section 7, grants an exemption for sex offenders and predators to enter into a thousand-foot radius of a park, quote, "as a result of fulfilling legally allowable duties imposed by gainful employment." This was deeply concerning me on multiple levels. Therefore, I would like to bring back to the board two things. Number one, an amendment to Brevard County Code 74-102 restricting the exemption so that offenders, predators who have committed an offense where the victim is a minor cannot work in a school, childcare facility, park, playground, or other place where children regularly congregate. This is consistent with Florida Statute 775.21, Section 10B. The second item coming forward would be a change to our grant applications. Add into the application for all county issued grant programs, including but not limited to sports grants, major event grants, cultural grants, and the application must certify that they will not employ sexual offenders or predators directly or indirectly through their subcontractors. If they choose not to do so, then they would be ineligible for the grant. While I don't have specific language on this, it will require a little bit of time. The county attorney who got me most of this language and said it was permissible under statute, I wanted to see whether the board would be willing to move forward with those two things and give the county attorney the leeway to investigate that a little bit further.
I would support that, absolutely.
I would support it.
Okay. I will bring that back, I will bring that back at a later date, once the county attorney has, has, has moved forward with that. Okay, on a lighter note, Vice Vice Chair, today is National Comfy Day. I'm not sure what a comfy is, but it is. Useless Florida fact, the concept of spring break began in 1938 when a swimming coach from Colgate University brought his swim team to the Florida to train at the new Olympic-sized swimming pool in Fort Lauderdale. Shortly after, this idea spread to other swim coaches and became the annual tradition for swimmers nationwide. By around 1960, however, students had begun to come to the towns in great numbers, and local businesses took advantage of the influx by offering specials, such as all-you-can-drink beer for $1.50. Eventually, a town gained the nickname Fort Liquor Dale and became the primary destination for students interested in partying during spring break for years to come. This day in Florida history, and I'd like to thank Yvonne Minus for kicking my butt on this one, I, and pointing out that it is Black History Month. On February 20th, 1960, students at Florida A&amp;M University and others from around the country held a sit-in at Woolworth's lunch counter in downtown Tallahassee. When they refused to leave, 11 were arrested and charged with, quote, "disturbing the peace by engaging in riotous contact in this, in assembly to the disturbance of the public tranquility." Rather than pay their fines, eight students opted for jail fi, jail time, effectively launching one of the first jail ends of civil rights movement. Among those jailed was Patricia Stevens and her sister Priscilla. While in prison, Patricia wrote a letter about their experience and her thoughts on civil rights, which reached leaders like Martin Luther King and Jackie Robinson. King wrote back to Stevens, quote, "You are suffering to make men free." Important stuff. And county employee recognition is Larry Little, repo graphics and scanning specialist, five years of service about the employee. Lance, Larry assists the public, county agencies, and other government agencies in reproduction, scanning, and research of historical maps, aerials, subdivision plaits, survey books, road plaits, and, and various other types of public record. Employee, interesting fact, Larry has appeared in background roles in various movies, most notably 1990s protester in The One and Only Ivan. Larry loves animals and cares for two dogs, Lance and Romeo, and several cats, Mama, Baby, Bandit, Charlie, and Max. Thank you for your service to the county and the people that reside within. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
I'm sorry, I can't get the light on. May I?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Commissioners, I thought I am going to, I forgot to ask this when we got done with the last one. I don't want to do it off of public, but I would like to go ahead, ask the county attorney, how do we go about then following Ms. Blickley's recommendation that we would send that to the charter review? And that doesn't meet for another two years, four years? So is that something the commission's going to need to bring up later to send it to the charter review for a review?
May I have a little time to investigate that and send it back out to you?
Okay. I didn't want to do anything not in front of everybody right now, so that would be a good question, so.
Okay. Thank you. Public comment, Sandra.
So before the last meeting, I had a rally outside, and I received an email from Mr. Richardson prior to my rally stating, per county policy BCC 54, that I was restricted way out by the corner, way away from the county commissioner building. And I'm going to allege this is a First Amendment violation, and I would like to see it corrected. I'd like to see the policy, my request is that the county correct this policy. So online on the ACLU, it reads, "Your rights are strongest in what is known as traditional public forums, such as street sidewalks and parks. You're also likely to have the right to speak out on other pub, public property like plazas in front of government buildings, as long as you're not blocking access to the government building or interfering with other purposes the property wasn't designed for." If you walk out right now over to DMV, you'll see as part of the policy, it's not just for protesters, it's also for people soliciting. There's people in the hallway, they're there every day. So the question is, was this like selective enforcement because of the issue that I had? So this is a picture of us protesting out there. A lot of the people couldn't find us because, you know, we thought we were going to be in front of the building. So the issue is about the mid-reach, and this is another legal issue I have. And then, per policy BCC 97, I'm going to read that, "In the event a serious allegation of misconduct or incompetence are alleged against any county employee, the board may abate the matter and request the county manager to investigate the allegations." So on this issue, I'm requesting the county to investigate these allegations. Recently, on the DEP Oculus system, there's a request, the county requests a notice to proceed for construction of beach renourishment. It's alleged that the upcoming 2023-25 renourishment is more or less identical in scope, schedule, and methodology as 19, sorry, 2019. It attached to that is a Florida, sorry, a federal FWS document, which says, "If the plan changes, it requires a new biological opinion." Well, the plan did change in scope. I had a conversation with Natural Resources Director the other day after SOARL was told that they changed to fill design. The amount of sand is horrifically more. The amount of the reef buried was prohibited from putting it on reaches in, in significance on reaches four to six, and it was horrifically buried. I will send you more documents and request a formal investigation as well as our First Amendment right aspect that policy reviewed.
Thank you, Sandra, very much. Richard.
Richard Heffelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, District One. You guys are so gracious that you give us these agendas, but we don't appear to follow them. The agenda, as far as I know, I think it I think it comes out five days prior to the public. So you publish it on the Ledger Star, right? That's when we first see it. When do you guys see it? Because this agenda, typically, Robert's Rule says that you have a motion to approve the agenda, so if somebody's got a problem or wants to amend the agenda, that's the opportunity to do that. If you had items that you were going to bring up in board reports, the time to do that is not board reports. The time to do that is when you approve the agenda. I mean, I don't know how much time you guys get to look at this or talk. I know you've got Sunshine Rules, you're not supposed to talk, but if you've got something cooking, I think you should at least take the opportunity to try to put it on the agenda, because if you're doing stuff in board reports and making votes and moving motions, when do I get to have an input on that? I don't. So this is kind of little Robert's Rule sloppy stuff. You got an agenda, you approve the agenda, you vote to amend the agenda. I didn't see you vote to amend the agenda. We moved all this stuff from the big chunk of stuff that you wanted to think was not important moved to the beginning. I don't know what that was about, but you guys didn't even vote on that. The chair just said, hey, let's do it first. Well, you're confusing the hell out of the public. You're also stopping us from having the opportunity to get some insight into what you're doing and make comment. So I think you guys really need to think about what you're doing, Robert's Rules, because I do try to participate, but not if I don't know what you're doing. I don't know if that's intentional. Some people would say that's intentional. I don't think it is. I think it's just a little sloppy. That's how I view that. So I'd like to see you guys do that. And this Vice-Vice Chair stuff, what is that? I don't...John, how much time do you spend or do you put staff doing that? That's one of your big things. I don't know. That sounds like a public comment. I think you've got the diocese. You can say that in anything you want to do. I just wonder how much and value that has to the public. I mean, the chair is in charge of public comment, or is it the Vice-Vice Chair? That was a previous chair thing. I don't know if you still think that that's...you don't want to run the public comments as chair? I don't understand Vice-Vice Chair. Is that documented somewhere? That just seems a little silly. So that was just some of my comments. Lot of time spent on a lot of stuff that I don't know that's how important. Again, the focus of where we spend the time. You know, talking about bathrooms for that long, that's a little weird. Putting things on the review and coming from the diocese, I don't know. Just a little disappointed today, but thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Katie?
Hello again. So as I've been talking with the public, I've been hearing the same thing from the people in North Brevard, and that is, one of the major issues that people are very upset about is the overdevelopment that's going on, or irresponsible development that's going on in North Brevard. We have major flooding issues in North Brevard, and all of this irresponsible development is adding to that. And like I was talking about earlier with the property in Cannavale Groves, that's just one of many examples. There's also Sherwood Forest, which is a beloved neighborhood in North Brevard. People adore that neighborhood, and the construction that's going to come in that that community is fighting right now is going to destroy their homes. It's going to destroy the atmosphere of that area. People come from all over to come to that neighborhood for Christmas and Halloween, and their neighborhoods are going to be destroyed. SB 102 is another major issue. The Live Local Act, I've spoken about it many times. The thing that I'm asking all of you today is, you all waived the impact fees for SB 102 projects. I'm asking you to turn that around. We need impact fees, especially on those projects, because they're not going to be paying property taxes. And so how are we going to pay for the infrastructure to better our community if no one's paying impact fees? Is this intentional? Are you guys intentionally trying to get rid of the middle class? Because what's going to happen is, we're not going to be able to get insurance. And when that happens, people are going to foreclose on their homes because they won't be able to abide by their mortgage contracts. So we need to look at this very differently, and I'm asking you all to take this seriously. Thank you.
Aye. Come on up, young lady. That would be you. Nice to see you again, Kristen. Christie?
Kristen.
Kristin.
Good morning again. Kristen Lorti, Cocoa resident, founder of Brevard Care Citizens Group, where we have some concerns and cares. I'd like to start by supporting Ms. Sullivan's concerns that she spoke about a few minutes ago. One, about the treatment of protesters and having to go a specific spot on the property. That looked very unpleasant and not quite right. I was there that evening, would have liked to have seen them when I was driving in. And then on the REACH 6, she's putting out a lot of pretty interesting data on that, and, you know, drowning a reef with sand raises public concerns. My topic that I want to speak on today is about the Speak Up Brevard program that I started talking about on the February 6. So on January 3, I wrote to you all, and I provided a recommendation regarding the Speak Up Brevard program. For anyone that's not familiar, I'm sure that all of you are, but it is the process where citizens can weigh in, provide suggestions on efficiency and effectiveness with our government, in which you do something with those recommendations, and you have to vote on those recommendations. So on January 3, I sent you an email, and it talked about...it had a recommendation in it about leaving the Speak Up Brevard County website open all year to receive citizen recommendations throughout the year. Now sadly, my comment came in two days after the website closed, because it closes on the 1st. And so how is it efficient or effective for my input to have to now wait a year? Because now your own website says that. It says, "Speak Up Brevard form is not available. The next scheduled recommendation form open date is December 1, 2024." So how effective is that to wait a year to receive my recommendation? So what I did since I wrote you the email is I further reviewed the policy documentation on it, and it's policy BCC-95, and that policy specifically states on item number two of Directive 3, that the form will be available for download and submission on the county internet homepage. Hard copies of the form will also be available. I don't care about that. I care about the form will be available for download and submission on the county internet homepage. Now, I did follow up. I have written to County Manager Abate, and I look forward to his response with my policy concerns that come on the tails of my recommendation to keep the website open all year round. I also pointed out that I'm confused on the process itself, because in the policy it states that you are required to take...that the county is required to take some action within 45 days of receipt of the recommendation. So if my recommendation comes in June, why isn't the county not going to do anything about it until right now? It looks like it's the whole process rolls from January 1 until 120 days later. That's when the whole process now. So I have some confusion on that. I look forward to the county manager's response, and I'll write to everyone once I receive that response. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you very much.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.